Order. Eighteen forty seven oh nine on the eighteenth January of two thousand twenty four. Before I proceed, I just want to read one little note from one of our selectmen here. Says, "Good afternoon." Good evening. Says, "I'm unable to attend the town meeting on Thursday." Would you please be as kind to read this following into the record? Due to a school trip that will take me out of town for a few days, I will be unable to attend the town county annual meeting on Thursday, January eighteenth. Thank you. Thanks and good luck with the meeting. One second. I was at a school trip, so. Okay. Would you make a proposal for motion? To nominate Steve Penner as the moderator? Can someone make a motion?
I move to nominate Steve Penner.
Stand up and identify yourself with mine. Stand up and identify yourself so we can see.
Darren Wiskey. I'm going to nominate Steve Penner as the moderator.
Second.
Second, please stand up and identify yourself for the record.
Your opponent.
All in favor? And you oppose? I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Penner. Thanks, Stephen.
All right, thank you, Marty. Thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. Before we get into the meat of the agenda, I was hoping that we could get a motion to actually waive the meeting warning. Anyone?
No.
You need to, we're all getting videoed, and we all, we need to stand up and state our name.
Kessica Richa.
Okay? Anyone second that motion?
Jason Wright, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you so much. So we're on to the first item on the agenda, which is number one, to authorize the Board of Selectmen and the Town Treasurer to borrow from time to time and upon the credit of the town funds for the needs of the town and to make it deliver negotiable notes of the town therefore. This is something that is standard for every year and allows the town to increase their functions and pay their debts. Any questions regarding this discussion? Hearing none? Yes?
Steve, somebody has to make a motion before they decide.
Hearing none, I'm going to ask for a motion for this first item on the agenda.
Kate Sun. I move to authorize Board of Selectmen and the Town Treasurer to borrow from time to time and upon the credit of the town funds for the needs of the town and to make it deliver negotiable notes of the town therefore.
Thank you, Kate. Is there a second of this motion?
Ken Cooper, second the motion.
Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'm going to call a vote on this. All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Signify by saying nay.
Hearing none, this motion carries. Moving right along to agenda item number two, which is to appoint the following to the Kent Park and Recreation Commission: Naomi Joseph, Rufus Durham, and Karen Iannucci. Is there anyone who wants to speak on this, on this item? Yep. Is there anyone who would be willing to make a motion to appoint these following people to the Kent Park and Rec?
Sarah Chase, I move to appoint the following to the Kent Park and Recreation Commission: Naomi Joseph, member for a three-year term ending one twenty-one twenty-seven; Rufus Durham, member for a three-year unexpired term ending one sixteen twenty-five; and Karen Iannucci, member for a three-year term ending one twenty-seven twenty-seven.
Thank you, Sarah. Is there a second to this motion?
Seconded, Fran Goodsell.
Fran Goodsell, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will call a vote. All in favor of number two of the agenda, to appoint these people to Kent Park and Rec? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Signify by saying nay. Motion carries. We're moving right along. We're on to agenda item number three, which involves changes or in the repeal of the current right-to-farm ordinance, Chapter five, Section five point two, and the adoption of the Protection of Farmers from Nuisance Claims Ordinance, Chapter five, Section five point two, as proposed and on file with the town's clerk's office. I don't know if we want to have any sort of, do the motion first, all right? Go straight to the motion. Is there anyone who would make a motion?
Martha Smith, I move the town repeal the current right-to-farm ordinance, Chapter five, Section five point two, and adopt the Protection of Farmers from Nuisance Claims Ordinance, Chapter, Chapter five, Section five point two, as proposed and on file with the town clerk's office.
Thank you so much. Is there a second to this motion?
I'll second.
I'll second the motion, Connie Manis.
Okay, Connie Manis is second in the motion. Is there any questions or any, any discussion involving this motion?
Well, I guess Jason Wright, I don't know. Someone might, I don't know how enlightened this group is on the change, and it might benefit the group to have someone explain what the significance of the change is and what it technically is.
Okay. I know that Connie Manis was instrumental in, in this work behind this, so Connie wants to give us a quick breakdown, that'd be really helpful.
Sure, Connie Manis, I'm happy to speak about this on Pacha Hall as a representative of the Kent Conservation Commission. In two thousand and fifteen, when the right-to-farm ordinance, which is moved to be repealed, was adopted by the town, the Conservation Commission had worked to put that together based on recommendations in Kent's two thousand and twelve P O C D and recommendations in the Northwest Hills Council of Governments P O C D. The recommendations were that towns adopt farm-friendly policies and practices, and the right-to-farm ordinance was held up as one of those model policies and practices. And so we did work to go through much of the same process as we do to get to tonight with our principles. We researched ordinances that were adopted by towns across the state, looked at different models, including the model that Henry Milford uses, Icon Attorney Mike Now is also a corner attorney in Milford, so he was quite familiar with that ordinance. It went before the planning and zoning commission and ordered selection and report coming to town meeting and being newly adopted. And that was in two thousand and fifteen, and there it sat for several years with no one using it, which is not surprising frankly, because the right-to-farm ordinance protects people who might otherwise be subject to nuisance crimes from those claims if what they're doing is ordinarily farming. And we don't in Kent have any provisions and ordinances that would allow someone to bring a complaint, a grievance, a nuisance suit because of noise or odors. And so it sat until a couple of people used it, I think, well, mainly to try and get a foot in the door, to bring a complaint against their neighbors for activities that might be considered farming. And the Board of Selectmen was confused, as were many, many people, about whether or not they should be trying to deal with the dispute. And because of that, they ultimately asked the Conservation Commission to try and clarify the ordinance and how it was meant to be used and what its intent was. So number one, we changed the name, which I think is what quite, quite clear now, saying that it is the Protection of Farmers from Nuisance Claims Ordinance, not an avenue to bring a nuisance to farmers. And the text also includes new introductory language to make it quite clear that, you know, this ordinance will come into play in the event that there is an avenue to bring a nuisance claim against somebody in the Kent community, and that nuisance claim was brought against a farmer for ordinary things that are activities associated with the act of farming. So again, been through the same kind of vetting process, went before the planning and zoning commission and the Board of Selectmen. Our town attorney has reviewed it, and here we are before you. And if you have any other questions about it, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jason Wright, and just again, for the benefit of the room, how do you define nuisance? Because I think that at the end of the day, you know, when you essentially put it in the, in the ordinance name, et cetera.
Well, it's.
Are you saying there are, there are certain things which it is a legitimate reason to have some dispute, and there are other things that are nuisance? Or are you saying that any complaints are nuisance complaints?
No, actually, you don't even need to get there, Jason, because there's no avenue to bring that kind of a complaint in the town of Kent. So right now, let's just say your next-door neighbor was playing a boombox really loud and it was noisy. You have no more right to bring a complaint, a nuisance complaint about that activity.
So you're saying that this refers to the behavior that you're complaining about, not the act of complaining about, is that? That's, that's what I mean, I think that's where.
It's maybe easier to do with like case scenarios. Let's say that there was a mechanism in the town of Kent to bring some kind of a complaint against your neighbor for that boombox, that very loud party that's happening that is annoying, right? If it wasn't a boombox, but it was the pigs or the horses or the chickens or the rooster or the tractor or something like that, you would not be able to bring that complaint against that farmer who is doing normal farming things the same way as you might be, and you're not right now, entitled to bring a complaint against that loud party neighbor.
That's awesome.
Karen Tomano Iannucci, does this apply to the Kent?
So the definition, and it's not before me, so I have to apologize for not being able to refer exactly to, you know, the language on it, but I believe that it applies to all activities that are in accordance with the state's definition of farming. We did not make our own definition of farming. So you can see, you know, how in the regulation, or sorry, in the ordinance, agricultural operations and farm are defined. I would perhaps just add that this ordinance does not exempt you from following all of the other regulations in the town of Kent. And so specifically to the question about the brewery, it might depend on whether or not that brewery was operating in accordance with its ordinance.
So this is what, so you're saying that this would apply to that?
I'm saying that if a farm were permitted to be operating, then it would apply to it, yeah.
I'm sorry, so you're saying that there's no right to bring in action for a nuisance now? But in case there is one, then farmers are protected by this?
Yes, yes. I, I know, I know. It was recommended in the P O C D for our town and for our council of governments that we put on our books farm-friendly policies. We chose this as an easy one, but it ended up being easy for people because until there is a nuisance ordinance, it's largely meaningless and beyond an expression of support for agriculture in our town and our agricultural heritage.
Any further questions for Connie? Thank you, Connie. Thank you for your work on this as well.
Steve, can I say something?
Yes?
I, I know this is a lot to, Marty, let me reflect on. This is a lot to digest, but the definitions are fairly well laid out of what farming is. Now, farming is changing all the time. You're getting agro-farming, you're getting spatial farming, you're getting all kinds of farming, so it's tough to keep up with it. But in, in the case of the brewery, which does have the ability and the authority to use certain chemicals you were describing earlier, Karen would, you know, putting into their hops and so on, certain things that would help their fermentation by, to which in a sense is kind of a farming agricultural product. How they use it, obviously, I know I've heard a lot of issues with that, and that's fine. But as long as approved through the applicable state federal regulations for the use of that chemical, and then they're trained, and if you've ever used chemicals, if you use it commercially, you have to be licensed to be able to handle and use certain chemicals. So that's kind of what they're referring to, I think, maybe in the case you're describing there. So there, I think certainly the Conservation Commission, P O C D, planning and zoning, and, and the lawyers have looked at this as best they can in accordance with what the state has. Now, this is the start of the ordinance. We certainly can work and do other things. That's what the town will be able to do if they need to make some adjustments. We know, so.
Now I'm more confused.
Now you're more?
Yeah, I wasn't as confused as I am now. So are you saying that they can do whatever they want because they're a farm?
I said, in accordance with state law for the use of chemicals for pesticides, which is what you described to me early, and they spray.
They have to spray a hops, and then in the water and so.
As long as it's an approved chemical, and they are licensed to handle that as part of their agricultural business of farming and brewing, yes. Now, if it's found out that they're not using something, then certainly, then that is not a nuisance or not a right for farm anymore. That's a legal use of a controlled substance.
And who checks on them?
So wait, actually, I think we're getting, I, I think we're getting away from what is actually before us because it actually has no bearing at all on this protection of farmers against nuisance claims. Because you couldn't bring a nuisance claim before, and now you still can. I mean, that's kind of what it boils down to, right? And if you could, you couldn't against a farmer because of our town's support of farming. Four things that are connected with farming, not the noisy parties necessarily, but odors. I'm trying to think of what was like, it's like odors, dust, noise. Right, the things that are mentioned in the ordinance.
A, B, C, D, A.
So it really, you know, we don't have to get into all of the other regulatory things that farmers need to comply with. Really, this particular ordinance only deals with giving farmers an added layer of protection against nuisance claims, which they don't need right now in the town of Kent.
That's the new one.
So why are we doing this?
It's. You could say it's predatory. You could say that it is, you know, an expression of support. You know? I, I think that it is useful, and I think it, you know, perhaps it was bad practice to repeal something that was supportive and not, you know, substantiate with something else. But the fact remains that, I mean, the hope in this revision is that people would stop getting confused and thinking that it was some way to bring a claim against a farmer, which it's not. It is not a way to bring a claim against a farmer.
Again, this is to clarify and peel.
Exactly.
In ordinance, it's already in place.
People waste them in town.
It's something that was recommended by the P O C D, and it's not to start something new and fresh. It's just to make it better, it sounds like.
True, it actually doesn't even really change the way the ordinance operates. It just changes the title and makes it super clear how it's supposed to be, which I gather is still not super clear.
Well, Jason Wright again. Yeah, no, I actually happen to think philosophically, the issue is, you just said this is predatory, it, it, it's therefore meaningless. And there is a school of thought in governance, which is, you don't pass ordinances that do not, you know. So I guess that's, and just for voters, including me, there is a school of thought, whether you're libertarian or conservative or whatever, and I happen to be liberal, which says you don't actually pass ordinances unless there's a reason for them. So that is actually just in looking at this as a voter, that's what.
Some people would say that there wouldn't be a word "precatory" if it really was meaningless. Precatory is a way of saying you're expressing an intention and a desire and a belief, and so there is some reason to have it on our books. You know, here it is. Now you understand what it is. I've answered your questions. And if there are any more questions, Connie, Frank Goodsell.
Could you, the change says that you have protection of farms, of farmers from nuisance claims, and that is changed from.
Right to farms.
Right to farms, thank you.
The other change is the, the major change is the second paragraph under purpose and intent to make crystal clear that it's not the purpose of the ordinance to create an avenue for complaints to be made against farmers, because that is what, in fact, it ended up being used for.
So we do have a motion on the floor that was seconded. Is there any further discussion before we go ahead and vote on this motion? Okay. Hearing none, I will call a vote on the agenda item number three. All in favor, signify by saying aye and raising your hand, please.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay and raising your hand, please.
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. At this point, we are all the way to the presentation of the Five-Year Capital Plan. At this time, I am going to lend the floor to Marty, who is going to take it from here for a bit.
Thank you. We're going to have, go ahead, come in. We're going to have a short presentation by the Chair of the Board of Finance, Nancy Uday-Wyreck, who's going to explain the concept of the Capital Plan, and she had some slides to do. I know there was some confusion about who can get on the Zoom and so on. And, you know, it's still a bit of a holdover from, from our COVID time. But Nancy, the only one that's going to be on the Zoom tonight, and she'll be giving that presentation, and then we'll talk. Now, if there's questions that you have, now wait, because the way that the configuration of this room is with the Zoom, if you've been to any of the meetings or seen or heard them before online, it gets all crazy. So what Darlie Brady, the moderator, the IT person tonight is going to do is going to have to switch back and forth from your question to the answer. It has to be kind of mute the room while we do that so that Nancy can speak, and you don't hear a lot of reverberation in, in the recording and everything else, so. So take your time. If you have a question, just raise your hand. We're calling you. Do the transition from Nancy or back to you guys, whatever, and then back to Nancy for any answers. Okay, so just take a slight, slight pause as we get the technology working in the room. Okay? Nancy, are you there?
She's on mute.
She's on mute. Yeah. Nancy? Nancy? Nancy, are you ready? Nancy? She was on last night's meeting, we could see her. She, you have her camera on? Anybody, Nancy? Nancy?
You made a call yourself?
Give her a buzz, give her text.
She says she's on.
We have no, no video?
Tell her, yeah, we have no video and no sound.
Okay, she's on. She didn't have a problem last night. She doesn't know why she's having a problem tonight.
Just log out and log back in.
Yeah, you see us. If we can't, then I'll go ahead and, and, like Chair of the.
She says she's joined the meeting and the, her computer audio is connected. You may, you want to speak to finally?
Shari, would you please take Steve first?
Here's Sharon.
Hey, Nancy?
Hey.
Hi.
Remember, I told you that you were going to have to do this?
Log out and log back in?
Sure.
All right, try that. That doesn't work, so go ahead and move forward.
Be just a second.
So remember, technology is here to help us forward in a positive manner. Is everybody who wants or needs a capital? She's kind of being next to our most. Ellen, can you unmute on your end? Because at least there's a mute sign, which is.
She's, we can unmute her.
Try it, let's see, try.
We are.
Marty, constructive suggestion for the future, I pray, is for this. There was a time, we got nice, long tables here, where the Board of Finance and everybody else could be here, and we could proceed. We got to have it done with the tech schmeck. It's not working. That's just a constructive suggestion for fancy endurance and town meetings such as this.
Thank you, Sarah.
Doesn't help us need to hear it.
Thank you.
The capital plan, the Board of Selectment approved for forwarding. We'd made some cuts, and we'll talk about that. So we provided to the Board of Select to head discussions, or should be Board of Finance to head discussions, and then they agreed to accept it. They didn't approve anything yet. It's just an acceptance period. They'll go through review it, and before it goes down to PUCD, they don't like it, they'll send it back and say, we need more cuts, or we have some other questions about so on. And then the Board of Select will go back into and work on that. Goes through approval by the planning and zoning. They look at all the aspects to make sure that we're in compliance. It goes recommended as part of the budget by the Board of Finance for the May Town Meeting. So that's, you see, between January and May, that's the time that it actually gets worked on, and it goes through other committees and other reviews and so on. So it's not until the actual town meeting in May before it's actually finally approved as part of the overall. I think most of you have been there for that. And then tax payers vote on the budget, May Town Meeting, approve budget, Board of Finance sets a no rate, usually right after that. They've had time to actually study the budgets itself and through the hearings and figure out exactly what it is. At that point, it goes into an approval process or disapproval. If it's disapproved, it goes back to the Board of Finance for modification, possibly back to the Board of Selectment, but certainly back to the Board of Finance. And then a modified budget returns for a vote, and that can go back and forth if necessary until an approval of the actual capital plan. And the budget, the complete budget is done in May. Again, it's a combination of the budget, the department budget and so on, school budget, exterior budgets from other organizations and so on, nonprofits in support. Now, that's a total budget place. All right, 10-year horizon. The whole point of the capital plan is, and it's a really brilliant thing, is to look 10 years out for the replacement, addition, improvements of major capital programs. And it's 20 back to $30,000 range. Anything under that should be able to be handled within the budget year and budget process. But anything more than that is really what's looked at. And as most of you know, it's roofs, material, buildings, bridges, construction. We do, swift houses being looked at, park and rec programs and plans, things of that nature. Education, Board of Ed always submits, usually it's at Beniwar, capital. Looking 10 years out, and it's adjusted across the, from year six through year 10. Once it hits the five-year budgeting process, once it hits a five-year, that's when it's had a chance to be looked at. Again, the whole process of review has gone through. At that point, we start the taxing process. So the amount that comes in every year, whatever may be, and you'll get the, if you're looking at it, you know that the number we're looking at right now, the number that the Board of Select is recommending, that, once it crosses into, at this time, it's 2029, that's where we start the taxing process. And that's worked into the tax, it's worked in the mill rate, that's worked into what the town has, will agree on at some point, hopefully, to actually put away so that we can, you know, take care of the town and take care of the functions of the town. So it's taxed across five years to 20% a year, till we tax for the final amount that appears in this year's budget. And that budget then is approved again and can be modified, but certainly it's been looked at, taxed for, and it's ready to go. So everybody has a five-year awareness of what the taxes have been on the.
Just to add, you have three Board of Finance members in the room, so Fran Goodsell's here and Casey Cogan in the front row along with myself. And, oh, and Teagan somewhere. There you are. And Teagan Gallo is there. Okay, so. And for the town again, I mean, the point of the capital budget is, there are certain things for the town which cost both, cost so much, and frankly, the law considers things such as capital expenditures versus operating. Operating expenditures are just year to year, what are in the budget. The capital expenditures, because it might be a building, it's over five or 10 years, and a piece drops in each year's budget. So the reason that this is a separate category, it's not so much the taxing, because it's no more significant and it's frankly less significant, as opposed to the operating expense for the town. But it is that we have to look at these expenditures, which are going to make over a five-year thing, and you can see, oh, it's going to have an impact on this budget for the next X number of years. So that's why we're laying it out for the town, separate than just the budget. But it will all roll up into the one-fifth or one-tenth of it, you know, in each year's budget when we come to you, okay, and in May for a vote on the overall budget. It's always worth a separate discussion about these, because A, we're making these bets over a longer period of time, B, they're kind of large expenditures for the most part, even though they are outweighed by a lot of your budget and the school budget, frankly. But it is a way to make certain that you have, some say, over these big expenditures. But very frankly, no more important than the regular budget district.
Again, to smooth the, getting a huge tax bill at one point or something, and trying to actually ameliorate the, as Jason described it, the larger tax, the larger items that need to be done in the town and the cost that, and smooth across that five years. So provides consistency in the annual budget. Again, and then, as Jason said, it actually takes it, and you have an idea of exactly what the expenditures will be in the line items as well as the capital plan. Because what you do is you put in the capital plan, you put it away, you tax that year five, or one through five, and that goes away until the year of execution of that money. And then that becomes part of the actual, you know, yearly budget, along with the operating budget of all the departments. So you kind of have a really good idea of where you're going with the money down the line, and it's less volatility for taxpayers. I hope you agree with this. And there's an example, the five-year capital plan, if you can see that. Basically, they're using, actually, I think, pretty much, information is actually in the parts of the capital plan. Kent Center roof, DPW, Park and Rec, bridges, the fire rescue truck, zoning regulations, has money for updating PUCD and paying for certain things in certain times. Park and Recreation Department, I think what they have in that one is a $25,000 for a park and rec plan, which you do want to put in and update every few years. We have it for the assessor, which might be a little of an issue right now. But every so many years, we are required by the state to have an assessment review, and we need to pay for the assessor, the company that comes in, actually does the assessment review, and that's in the budget as well. And then community house flooring, or the buildings and the facilities that are under town control, town use, community house, this building, senior center, things like that, and the town, or the school itself, which is a town property, but operated separately in their budget, but their capital plan comes back through us, you know, to go from there. And the impact of all that is all total up. And over the years, you see exactly how much money each year of that capital plan would cost us in taxing. Questions?
Can we assume that the relevant departments that are responsible for these are in agreement with the decisions that are reflected in this budget? You know, for example, you've got the Kent Volunteer Fire Department. So can I assume that the fire department is in agreement with the staging of the expenditures for their relevant equipment, just like other departments?
Sure. Again, we need to have your name on records. Ken Cooper. Ken Cooper, sorry. I would say probably not. Let me be honest with you. When you cut a budget that you worked hard and tried to put together on, and it's looked in conjunction with everybody else who has requirements, and you take a cut, you're probably not super happy with it. But in most cases, to explain, we have the time during the Board of our Select meetings to have the discussion with each one of the departments, and usually we come to some kind of agreement, but happy, I don't know if they're happy, but.
And these were the happy with their agreement, you know.
Well.
And Marty, and Marty Park too, and in the, in the budgeting process, we do have a capital budgeting process. You have Board of Finance coming from the Board of Selectment, and we do get input and have back and forth with each department during that process. So it's not just the Board of Selectmen pulling a number out of the hat, but it is based on.
Right. As I said, the Board of Selectment had two meetings already with all the applicable departments that we did review their capital plan, so we had that same function, and that's what we presented to the Board of Finance last night. So we've done our bit with the individual organizations, fire department, park and rec and so on, and that's what we presented. And then the Board of Finance has the same and more specific review with it. Agreement, probably so. I mean, I was being a little, see, she's nobody likes to be cut, right? I don't like when my wife cuts my.
I assume that if they had a major problem with it, then they would appear at this meeting and object to something.
Yeah, and that's exactly what it is. Yeah, but I think in most cases, they explain to us why they need it and what the requirements are, and most of us are not the experts on exactly the equipment, that's why we bring them in. But we do, you know, most of us have been around a little bit in Thompson, and myself have been at Schoolmore, and Lindman, you know, to every organization I think there is in the town, which is a great credit to her. So we do have a knowledge, but we will listen. We try to really listen and understand people. So I think we come to an agreement on it. Yeah, I think we generally come to an agreement on that. And a lot of times, it's moving things around, it's not cutting necessarily, it's moving it back over the line, so we don't, you know, this year, we don't tax, we don't put it into the five-year tax, we move it back to adjust that five-year taxable, because that's where it starts, is the taxing that fits in.
Marty, I think it's important, since you've gone into such detail about explaining, I'm sorry, Lynn Worthington Selectmen, that we are actually this year really only looking at the fifth year of fiscal year 2029, because once it's in the plan, we don't tend to go back and change it unless we are informed that there are prices that are wrong now, that the truck can't be approved for that particular amount of money. So we really focus on looking at fiscal year 2029.
And again, this is just an example for scriptural purposes. We'll have the specific budget will be up here in a minute, and then we can go into specifics that we're going to change. But yeah, we don't really monkey with anything that's already been approved prior years, unless there's a significant issue. But, yeah, so. Any more questions? Yeah.
Matthew Winter, I am wondering whether the guidelines that were put forth by the Board of Finance have been adopted or accepted by the Board of Selectmen.
Great, great, man. I was just going to lead off the actual one saying yes. So while we're getting the actual five-year capital plan up here, or the whole capital plan, but it's a five-year we'll talk about, exactly. The Board of Finance got together this past year and looked at a kind of a guideline, and it's a guideline, for how much do we want, really expect to get into the capital plan in that five-year? What are we really looking for? And they came up with a percentage of 15% of the actual budget, the overall budget, would be a capital plan. Max, kind of keep that as a target about the Board of Selectmen. We did meet and we agreed to that, again, that guideline, and that was what guided us as we did our first initial cuts. So yes, there's a few other things in there, Jason, if you want any.
I think, I think that's right. But I think, again, for the town, it simply is, you nailed it on the head, which is, you know, the goal for the Board of Finance and therefore, you know, after the discussion with the Board of Selectmen is simply that we won't be spending more than 15% of what comes in on capital projects.
Can I ask a call? Matthew Winter again. So what does that mean for the two years? What does that mean for the projects that have not started within the two years after the project was fully funded? Because there's, there's a pile of them that haven't started yet, and if you have adopted that, those guidelines, then that money should evaporate?
We feel that there needs to be more look, I think, and speaking kind of tangentially, because we didn't get into that until we agreed to the overall guidelines of 15%. The other specifics about, and what matters, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are some things that have reached the year of execution that haven't been executed on. There's money that sits around for a couple of years. And one of the recommendations, again, and it's a guideline, it's not, it's not a law or a policy, and that may be where we need to look at going to that, is how long do we let money sit there that an organization isn't able to execute? And it could be unable to execute, it could be they're not ready, the cost has changed, you know, that's certainly part of it as well. How long do we let that money sit there that's been taxed and put against before we move it back out into the budget or back over the line to fund something else? Or go back into our reserve fund or whatever we call that extra money we don't really have, but.
One last thing?
Sure.
That's an important component of those guidelines, and if we're going to follow one set of, one piece of those guidelines and not another, it's, gets created, it's confusing for me, because does that mean that the Emery, the $150,000 for Emery Park goes away? Does that mean that the $850,000 for the fire truck goes away? You know, and both of those things probably wouldn't be fair unless it was a, it was a policy that were applied equally across the board. So just try to, please be careful with what.
But let me correct again. He used the word policy. There is no policy, there's guidelines. Guidelines are just that, they are operative. And I understand what you're saying, and I think what we need to do is look at going to policy, for that'll give us, you know, specific direction. Again, the ability to say, well, we'll go with it today. So I think your point is all taken, and I agree with it. I was not prepared, and it must be, but I was not prepared to get into that specificity in the couple of months that I started on the board and got this. So, but it is something that I think it is, we, I think we'd agree, we'd like to look at, and then looked at it and made a lot of recommendations. So I think down the line, we'll, we'll work with the Board of Finance to see if we want to shore up that, you know, that to something more specific, because it's a good, it's a good, you know, reasonable look at how we do our finances, if we're going to leave stuff, money that we've already taxed sitting around in the organization that was taxed to use it, is unable to use it, then we should look at, any questions? Can they reassign it to something else? Or can we do it, does the town retrieve it back, put it against something else? Do we put it back in the fund? Do we put it back in the general fund? Those are all good questions, and I think it needs some specificity. So we, you know, we took the guidelines of 15%, that's kind of what I started with. No, it's a good question, Matt. Yeah, no, it's excellent question, excellent question, that the policy should be aware. And that's an excellent thing, and that's something that I think we need to work on, and I know the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, sure, will take a look at that to take, you know, more specificity to share.
Casey Cogan, as a member of the, of the committee of the Board, I think it's an important issue to us, and we would expect that there to be some movement from that, those reserves, the money that hasn't been spent. Sometimes before we all get together and made a vote on the budget, we'll see some changes, and obviously, it's ultimately up to the Selectmen, but it's an issue we will keep hounding them.
And there's, you know, the addendum to that is that when a project is completed, if there's money left over from the project, I know at the school board, we were lucky a few times to be actually under budget, a couple of programs, that money goes back in and had been kind of sitting for, when I first got on the board of that, it was said, Jen, you're back here too, if you have anything to say. We looked at applying that to another program, and there was no real guidelines or even a policy or procedure to do that. But we were able to do that on some projects we did, I think, for the security entrance way and the windows, we were able to move some money around. But budgetarily, that's not supposed to be done unless we have the guidelines to do that. So I think that's, there's a larger encompassing thing about money that has been executed, money that has been put against it, that, you know, is left over, and how we do that. Do we give it to the organization who somehow managed to fund their funding, or do we bring it back and look to reality? But I think there's more people that need to be involved.
Nancy is now on video, and Jess is still having difficulty getting her onto it.
So can you hear me now?
Yeah. There you go.
Thank you.
So Marty, Casey, everybody, you did a great job with the presentation. Thank you. I'm sorry about their, I'm taking care of a grandson out of state. Wanted to talk briefly about the guidelines. We did not want to be rigid in that document when we created it. It is a fluid document, and as the needs of the town and the management of the town by the Board of Selectmen change, those guidelines are going to change. So there's nothing rigid about them. If we had to go to 17% because we needed a bridge repair in one year, that's probably what we do. I mean, it's a matter of how all of the operating expenses flow in and those needs, and then also the needs, the capital needs that we have. And if you think of it, for those of you who are old enough, you will remember what a Christmas club is. It's like a Christmas club. You save up until you have the money, and then you buy the equipment, or you. You save up until you have the money, and then you buy the equipment or you do the project. And that's what the purpose of funding it over the five years is for. And it helps smooth it out, as Marty explained. So again, my apologies about the technology. It's great when it works, and when it doesn't, it's the pits. So please carry on with the meeting.
Okay. So that's how we kind of started the Board of Selectmen review of the capital plan. So can we, can you X out the all tools? All right. So I'll just do a general description. Most of you have this in your hand. What you'll, what you'll see here, and this is where the black line is down, that's division between 2025 and 2026. That's the line. We talk about coming over the line into the taxable five-year. Okay. So the amount at the bottom is what we, this was mounted all the time. And the columns that we're looking at that line is what Board of Selectmen worked on and agreed to in four to two more of finance. So that amount actually comes to about a cut of 720. Now, I know if you split, if you turn the page, you'll see where we made the cuts. But we can either, well, here we can go to the cuts, or we can go to what we agreed to keep in the budget. And that's what I'm going to explain or show you why we did the cuts where they would, really up to the audience. If you can understand the amount, we certainly, we could talk, and there's organizations that are here to talk to their process for fire department. I see it here. That's always an issue with equipment and so on. But there's others. I know Park and Rec is here, Rufus is here.
Marty, I do think for the towns, again, it's simply, the big news, what you just said though, is simply the word cut. So, you know, by the way, that's, I think, more than specific. I think what the town needs to know is, in looking at the capital budgets, the Board of Selectmen have found some areas where they think you can cut back in the out years.
Correct.
And so it's not so much, you know, that's really for this audience, what is the important, you know, part of the participation. It's not, not if it moved over or whatever. But what you're saying, if I heard you right, is you think that there are opportunities to cut some things in the capital budget in the out years. Is that correct?
No, that's not what I said. What I said is, the column to the left of the black line is the final amount that the Board of Selectmen agreed to. And on the second page, in I think a pink box, actually lists where we made adjustments and moved things back over the line. We didn't actually cut any money outside of any budget or any perceived capital plan in that time. We just moved it back over the line so it was not taxable for this year. So we just kind of delayed the money coming over the line into the tax quarter. That's kind of what it is. So, you know, we should tack that cover of the plan and give it confusing. Oh, there we go. Okay. So let's start at the top, really. The Board of Education. We did, we, the Board of Finance, or Board of, sorry, my line here, we did not touch the amount of money that is inside that line on 2020. We did not touch it 2020. Yeah, 2029, excuse me, 2029. We felt that that was what the Board of, of that had been working on for a long time and had this, you know, well thought out plan to replace some real significant things. We talk about, you know, capital plan is really all about its those big items. And the school being the largest, most used facility we have in town, it needs to be, you know, taken care of. So any questions on that? Department of Public Works, we did talk to Rick and his guys, and he did move some money around. You'll see that in that pink box. We moved some money back over onto Bridge and Road and decided that we could delay some of the money. And so it was partly the, the bridge number 17, which. Excuse me, is it 17? Correct. The bridge number 17. Correct. That was one we adjusted and moved back over the line into.
I mean, probably the word would be out. So it's where in that thing, things would be moved from within that immediate period, the five-year. This is quite often, we push things in outer years if we think there's some benefit to doing.
Over the line into 2030. Yeah, however you want to, to look at it that way. As long as we understand what, what we did with that one. So that was an adjustment we made. Technology Fire Department, we came in and looked at what their specific requests were, and I know there's questions on that. We looked at engine number two, which was still on the out year, still outside of the taxable years, right? Not within the five-year plan. But rescue number eight, it's significant. It's a significant expenditure for that truck. John, you can square it if I'm wrong, but this is how I understood rescue eight. Rescue eight initially was served for specific, smaller utility. Over the years, though, as it became, you know, fire departments became more collegial, if you will, and more responsive to each other, the needs for more bigger uses of trucks, like rescue trucks, required them to be outfitted more completely. And so that's what the rescue eight is meant to do, is actually take on more tasks, more assignments, and more ability with more equipment. And so the cost to outfit it, the cost of the truck, the chassis, the whole thing has changed.
I just have a question looking at this. I really appreciate, by the way, the detail and all the explanation. So it looks like we're making repairs, or we're making investments in rescue eight in four out of the next five years, but then we're not doing anything after that. Instead, we're switching to making improvements or maintenance to engine two. So I'm just wondering kind of about how that works. I mean, is it the case that there would be no further expenses associated with rescue eight, or is it just not reflected yet?
None of these funds are being set aside for maintenance. This is really a savings process for, for the vehicle. And then so the last year you saw for rescue eight, we would have reached the savings amount necessary for the purchase or the purchase of a replacement rescue truck. And then the following year, we would begin that savings process incrementally to replace engine two.
So the only costs I'm seeing are for new vehicles.
We assume the cost of repair and maintenance and if out of our operating, that's an operating expenditure supposedly.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Sarah Chase, yeah. For the fleet for DPW, are we eventually moving to some sort of hybrid or electric vehicle? Or what's the long-term vision there?
For, yeah, we have looked at that, and I know that's, that's certainly a concern for all of us, is where we're going to go for alternative energy vehicles. Unfortunately, right now, they're not in production. They're not in instruction in the 10-year window we have right now. I think eventually it probably will get that way. But right now, for, as Rick is not here, but as he looks at the, the equipment and so on, he's actually buying equipment that's a couple of years old. So we're really reaching back into the early 2000s, we'll, for, for trucks and so on, because we can't afford the 450, $500,000 for each vehicle. We look at buying state-run vehicles, buying vehicles that have been refurbished, vehicles that are, that are useful for us here in a smaller area and that would sustain another 10 to 12 years. Trucks are looking at 25 years of use. So if we go for a used truck that's 12 years old, we can do it for another 12 to 15 years in that range. And that's kind of what they work for. So we're still looking at older technology. But yeah, certainly, if the opportunity comes to go to electric vehicles, hey, the torque on trucks, if you've been looking at trucks at all, I love trucks. They're wonderful. The ability to haul things, be able to do things and move stuff. But right now, they're not sufficiently available for us to make any kind of real cost savings and be able to get them here at this point. But, you know, that's something we look at.
And just to follow up, presumably if the state office grants, there's something we could, we could apply for those.
Absolutely. Let me go back here for Joe. Yes.
Bruce Osborne, am I correct in thinking that rescue truck number eight is going to cost us $1.1 billion?
The rise, particularly in materials, is unbelievable. And so, yeah, yeah. And I think I'm going to turn it over to the chief, who's been a little more abreast of just the unreal escalation in costs for this, if you would like further explanation. But yes.
Do you want to give a word of explanation here? I mean, I guess the answer is yes, but it seems like I'm terrible. But again, equipping it and causing the vehicle to sell. We looked at the numbers, which I could say we could find something different. But again, to get something that's useful and, and, and work well here for the long term. But yeah.
Alan Gobel, Fire Department, yeah, your comment is awful. We can't believe it. We can't believe we're dealing with that. That's part of the reason why the engine one replacement was delayed. We were looking at what the actual plan was, the current access chairman of our car base, and the cost, you know, was it hundreds of thousands of dollars short into what the original concept was five, six years ago in that replacement of order for fire trucks. So we reworked, you know, to look at different options. And so we hope that we wouldn't even have to put money in this fiscal year that's going to be into the budget for rescue eight. But we had Eric Epstein, you know, past chief, who came to the fire meeting and so forth and said, guys, this is the trend. This is what's going on. And he works professionally in this business, not specifically with this, this truck or anything with this in general. And said, these are what the numbers are doing. This is the trend. And we're talking about today. You know, yes, yes, this year, last year, you know, and so forth. We do it, or we saw it. And so he's saying, I was just making a projection for what's going to happen for four years from now for the total cost. We really hope that we can do things, say, that rise, you know, and so forth. And what's nice is that then, as had was done in the past, is that not all the money has to be spent, it stays in there. And then, like anything else, as was talked about earlier in this presentation, we would hope, or I would hope, that money can be reallocated within that business setup and as was meaning for something else, for another truck, you know, for another replacement coming up, still in the goals of what the town has done for fire replacement. But those are decisions that you heard earlier, the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen are still discussing and figuring out and what to do if money is left over and the timeline and all those other things.
By the way, I might add to that, you know, Marty, and, and agree with this also, we do think we need to revitalize our efforts at finding, being more creative and finding grant money to support some of these big ticket items, you know, with all, frankly, from the economic, you know, whatever, the Inflation Reduction Act, et cetera. So but I think we have an agreement amongst all of us that we, it's probably worth a little investment to see if we can get some resources to help us find more of that money because that comes right off of the budget.
And as we were talking about, if we find and when, I'll say when, because we are working aggressively to try to find grants, that reduces the amount of money that's even in the five-year plan. Then we will go back to what Matt was saying. What do we do with that? Do we return it to the organization? Do we return it? That's a policy, really. If we're going to start doing it aggressively, we probably need to have some specifics of how we're going to act. So we know exactly what we need to recommend, what, you know, the public wants, what we need to do, and what the Board of Finance needs to finalize for that. So, I mean, it's still, it's an ongoing process. The modest member stands. Okay. Anything else on the fire department? Yeah, Joe?
Yeah, I, Joe Ackley, I love that rescue eight fire truck. Now, that is a brand-new truck. Now, would you, could it be feasible to buy a used truck to keep the cost down?
So I haven't even introduced myself. I'm sorry. John Russell, I'm president of the volunteer fire department, and I've worked closely with Alan and the truck committee chair. And that is always, that is always on the table. In fact, our, our purchase of the tower was a used truck several years old because the, the costs of a tower truck is just so astronomical. We bought that used. What we are finding, though, is if you go into buying a used vehicle and the NFPA recommendations really kind of live, they're, again, recommendations. But once you start dabbling past 20 years on a vehicle, the technology, the safety technology built into these vehicles become, it so increases each year as they find more and more materials and elements of technology to protect the firefighters within those trucks. Your 20-year-old truck is getting to a point where it lacks the safety features that it does not meet a, a reasonable level of providing safety and reliability. So I would say that buying a brand-new truck, you met, you're almost going to have a more, a better bang for your buck in that regard. So that it, you really are going to get the, in most cases, the 20 years. But again, I just would like to give it an opportunity for the chief to follow up or validate or correct any.
Well, the only reason why I mentioned that is because it seems to me that there are other areas of, of other departments, other areas in town that are really, really lacking to, for improvements. And if some of the funding could be given to those areas to kind of bring them up to, up to par, I mean, at the Board of Selectmen, have to, have to deal with that. I realize that. That's, that's my, you know, that's, those are my thoughts on that.
Marty, also, I do think we've kind of had in the last few years, these conversations, you know, especially on the big-ticket items. And Rick's not here, but one of the things is I, we have heard from, from Rick, everybody's thinking the same way we are about it. So there is more competition for these used vehicles, and their prices have gone up as well, A. And B, so I think, I like that we do have a kind of a mix, you know, in our modest fleet, you know, which is we're not buying all brand-new, top-of-the-line, you know, equipment. And when we find an opportunity, frankly, if tomorrow Rick comes to us and he's somehow stumbled onto an opportunity, you know, what, you know, on town equipment. But the same thing with, with fire equipment, obviously, you know, we would do it. The other thing is, with used equipment, of course, the upkeep, maintenance, et cetera, is more. So that has, by the way, also a negative impact on the operating budget because you're spending more on maintenance, et cetera. So you're going to pay one way or the other.
Sarah Chase, one more question. The cost, you talk about maintenance, is that built in here?
That's, that's in the operating budget.
Yeah, all maintenance operates, the gas, the oil, and so on, is all in the operating budget of the year. This is only for the purchase, replacement of newer or planned items. Is there a question over this? And I just, again, just to throw the last bit with Rick, I sit there every day learning from him and looking at the websites of used trucks. And he's probably, he's probably spent half hour to 40 minutes talking to people, seeing what's available for out-years, not just now, but when you're going to put a thing in it. And we actually lost, from the morning he called, thought he had a truck in the state. Tommy called back 45 minutes later, the person who was moderating that sale had let it go to someone else, you know, and they went, ooh, sorry. But anyway, so, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a seller market. Okay. Again, anything more on the fire department before we move on? Land use, we did not change anything on land use at all. Park and rec, this is probably where we had the most specific adjustments and changes. So then you want to talk about it? There's our park and rec rep, I mean, if you want to. I mean, she's working with Rufus. But, yes, I mean, if you want, if not.
No, that's fine. I, I, I actually didn't agree with all the changes, but I did vote in favor of this. But the Selectmen were really focused in on the new capital guidelines and trying to deal with the, the amount of money that, and I don't want to misquote what it says, but the guidelines talk about an amount, a percentage of money that the capital project should be in a fiscal year. So that is what the Selectmen are really focused on for fiscal year 2029. So, so removed from the, from the park and rec request was the Kent Commons basketball, which was moved over into the sixth year. And the Kent Commons. And the Kent Commons, this is hard when I, details aren't here. So the, the 25,000 for Emery Park saving drainage was actually put back in. Rufus and John Grant came and talked to the selectmen and explained why that was necessary. There's draining, there's problems with drainage coming off of 341. And there's a desire to talk to the State Department of Transportation and try and get that resolved. Hopefully, we don't have to wait five years to get that resolved, but we can put money back in for that. We left the Kent Commons splash pad in at $250,000. This was proposed last year and moved out of the five-year capital plan. There is a desire to have some way for children, families to get cool in the summer. And that's what the splash pad is all about. The idea is that it would be part of the Kent Common layout. And, and this price is probably right in line and of what how much it will cost. It can vary widely because it depends on what kind of, what kind of equipment you actually install. There's a lot of variety. But basically, it's like a big sprinkler. And kids are going to be able to run through and cool off. And it's very, very popular. And so it would, the selectmen agreed to leave that in. And the thing that was moved out was 35,000 for the vehicle.
I hear a few second follow-up on that. One of the things that we did here for the, especially the splash pad, was we put in the ARPA grant that we are receiving. It's had to go through all the qualifications for an ARPA grant, and we did for $100,000.
For the grid.
Specifically, yeah, thank you. That's specifically geared towards splash pad. Can't use for anything else. But this goes back into, if we get that, then it should hopefully free up some of that money that we have in the capital plan to actually be looked at either for continuing, whatever it takes to actually place the equipment that's bought, that the Department of Rec will look at and do the review on and do the whole site review and all that kind of work with it, the planning and zoning and others, to make sure it fits where, you know, it's best there. But hopefully, we're hoping, but with that grant, that's like 99.9% pure, we should get that to augment the 250. So if it costs the 250, that we believe it does, then that will take $100,000 off of that tax bill and then go back to, you know, and we'll have a discussion, I'm sure, with Board of Finance and others on where that goes. But that was, that was a nice thing that we were able to do. And we're putting in grant to use for that.
And so, yeah, that state ARPA money, and they've already designated it for Kent, specifically for splash pad.
Waiting for the assignment.
And then the other thing was a replacement of a, of a vehicle. There is a, the Park and Rec did buy a truck in the past fiscal year. And so this would be to the cost of the vehicle. And the reason why Park and Rec needs a truck is because some of the equipment that Park and Rec has actually can't fit into somebody's car. So there are some, for just an example, there are some small-sized basketball hoops that are used for the pre-K. And they actually can't fit into anything other than a football truck. And they're schlepped back and forth between disbuilding and Kent Center School. So if you're wondering why, why Park and Rec uses this vehicle, that's one reason that there are other uses for it, obviously. Any questions? Yeah, Joe Agley?
Yeah, Joe Agley. I have a question on the, that, the new playground at Emery Park, that was $100,000. Now, that's all paid for?
All paid for through the capital plan. It is one of those things that went through the entire five years and was all ready to go this year. And they went through the process of sending out the bids and then awarding bids and all that stuff.
So that was in the capital plan, like going back five years?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
Bill McRec, is there, is there any plan that opened Emery Park this morning?
We are in the process of hiring a new director. And that new director, I anticipate the Park and Rec Commission will be directing that director to research what are the options for Emery Park. We need to do a lot, we need to do study. We need to find, we need to have an engineer to come in and see what's possible and get us, help get us prices and that kind of thing. So we're working on it. It didn't make a lot of progress in the last fiscal year, but I anticipate the new fiscal year we will. Yeah.
And then, Matthew Winter again. I think that the, that the park, the physical parks are really important. And they're important to maintain, important to understand how we're using them. And I know there's the, there's the opportunity for a master plan, but not until year three. And if the Board of Selectmen has that flexibility in the guidelines, then I would be in favor of moving some of them. And I know it has to go to, I know it has to go to Town Bill and it has to come from the, from Park and Rec. But there's $150,000 that are sitting in there that has been taxed, and it's been there since 2015. So if we could, if we could get going on a master plan for our physical parks, that would make, yeah.
And that is the process. We'd have to actually come back to a town meeting. The Park and Rec Commission would have to come up with a proposal of this is what we want to use this money for. It was originally allocated for Emery Park, but this is Emery Park Pool. It's actually a very specific Emery Park Pool. There's also money that's been allocated for the Emery Park Playground that hasn't been spent. So there's a big, fair chunk of money. So we would have to come back to the townspeople and ask and say, this is what we want to reallocate this money for and use it for this. For instance, master plan, engineering, that kind of thing. So that is the process.
So, yeah, just to follow up, I would be in favor of that.
Okay. Anybody else? Connie?
Connie, and this is not really specific necessarily to Park and Rec. But is there any place where there's a tabulation of those monies that were taxed for specific items?
And, yeah. If you go to the town website, the main page, Barbara Hertz put up capital project status. So there's a, there's a spreadsheet that's, yeah. And you can see where we're at on some of these.
It's kind of hard to evaluate, you know, the reality and the feasibility and the adequacy of our five-year capital plan without having the context of that. So it, it's, I'm glad to know that it's readily available, which I, you know, look forward to.
Yeah. And we're trying to publish those a little bit more visually, making sure we get more information out and we're, as we're, you know, Connie. So people understand exactly what we have in the capital plan, exactly what it's all about. That little diddy I put out a week or so ago, Lynn, said, you've got to get this out. And I agree. So we put that out. But we, there are a few things we didn't put in. A lot of things like the, how you vote in town meeting with whom you can, but other things. So one of the things we're looking to do, and this really kind of falls upon Lynn does and what you're saying, asking for Matt, is we're looking at other engineering studies that we need around town. We know that the climate change is here, like or not, it is here. And we have to be able to find ways that we can work with it or work our best around it. And I know Matt's still in the back and probably one of the biggest guys that has to deal with a lot of that water pouring down on the backside of Seager Mountain into his yard and around everybody else on that Bloxford Road. And that is something that I really want to work with. So working on that to actually, and I may disturb this as well, but we certainly want to be able to reallocate money to really, really need to have, not sit there and not use effectively.
Going back to that spreadsheet, though, for a moment. Is there, can you give me a sense of the total?
So the, the balance for fiscal year 2023 of money that has not been spent, and you can correct me if I got it wrong, 3.4 million dollars. And then this year's balance, this is not saying it hasn't been spent yet, but it totals 4.7 million. So there's a little bit of money. But that's like what Matt was talking about earlier is that the new capital planning guidelines are trying to encourage getting these new projects the money.
Well, and that number is five years' worth, really.
Right.
So it's, put it in some context.
But the point, yeah, the point you're, I think you're making, Connie, and I think it's an excellent one, is that we really haven't paid attention to that, you know, where that money goes and doesn't allocate. We need to have that, again, that's a whole process. We go from guideline to, to a policy of how we review, bring the organization back and take, can you really spend it? Is it effective for your organization to do that? Do we need to modify? Do you need to modify? Do you want to get an opportunity to reallocate into another program? Or should we come back and work and take it with the town? Dave, you had your hand up before.
I'm encouraged, Marty, that some attention be paid to the condition of Bloxford Road. If you want a mess which fire trucks knew, used, it wouldn't be able to get up for a public emergency. And I'm one of four property owners at the head. And I am willing to work with the towns. My property likes it, and three others do. And this thing has been a budget stepchild in the previous administration. And I am glad to see some attention be paid for it because it involves all of here. Park and Rec, Department of Public Works. And I look to see some effort made this year to get the drainage set, the surrounding property owners working with the town to get this road fixed so that it drains properly as other roads do in town. I think it comes before we do much else. It's necessary starting this year. And I am willing to help. We need to sit down and we need to have the ease, which I will be doing tomorrow. And I want to commend, despite all the tech planning that's gone into this. Moving forward. Thanks very much.
Bruce, please. I'll be silent for him. Has Park and Rec, or has Emery Park been closed?
Yes, Emery Park's been closed since the pandemic. It's closed to swimming. You can go in and hike.
They don't have a little chronic disease still. And the reason being?
Park and Rec originally closed from bacteria.
And it's?
Stop was leaving Emery Park Pool.
Because of what?
Bacteria.
The bacteria.
Oh, in a pool.
Because it's kind of a pond slash pool, you know?
Yeah.
There was a crack in it with hydraulic cement that was used to replace it. But the washway not being able to be used for a while caused it to be more of a health issue. But not structurally, I mean, it just needs some time. It takes together, and I know Park and Rec has been working on it.
Hasn't told anybody yet.
I don't know. If you lose anybody, or you're a kid, Bruce, I don't know. Any other questions for Park and Rec specifically? Okay.
Nancy does. Nancy does.
You're, you're mute.
I'm mute.
I think Darlene's going to unmute you. There we go. Okay.
So as Park and Rec approached Kent Center School about storing equipment over there because there should be some room over there with enrollment down a bit. And I would think that they'd be able to find some storage area, and we would not be needing to have a vehicle in the capital plan. Also, I wanted to, before you answer that, well, go ahead and answer, and then I've got a comment.
Nancy, there are two other parks. There's schlepping around equipment in different places. So it was a very used truck. We would not be looking at a new truck down the road. But we felt that you cannot take somebody's personal vehicle, regardless of what it is, to move around all the different equipment to different places. And it's not just going back and forth to Kent Center School, setting up equipment for other events in other parts of town. Thank you.
And I'll just add to that. We're always in discussion with Kent Center School, at least the, the selectmen are, to see what we can do to cooperate in a lot of areas. I don't think we've come to a lot of conclusions yet, but we're still in discussions on some of that.
And if I might, and that's what we have, by the way, over the next six months in the budget process, including that, that we're mindful of the comments. And certainly, as we scrub both the capital budget and the budget, we'll be mindful of the concerns. And anywhere we can find some creative solutions, obviously, we will.
I also wanted to make people aware that the guidelines that we have agreed upon for the Board of Finance have regular, we're going to have regular reviews of what has already been set aside for capital expenditures. Because we don't want taxpayer money sitting there. I mean, you paid it in good faith. So it needs to be spent, or it needs to go back to the town and therefore reduce the need for more taxes. So please be assured of that.
Thank you. Okay. Go to Swift House, part of the bottom blue, the bottom first page to the back of the second page. That's all kind of municipal facilities. Generally, it's been there. So we'll talk about the Swift House. Specifically, that's kind of middle of the, of the patch in the blue on the second page. All right, we have a Swift House task force. Zancheri's been working hard. We have, you know, March, March is here. It's a meeting. Okay. Yeah, March is here. We did have a meeting with them just recently to discuss what we've already decided and what was been approved, I should say, for an RFP for the initial evaluation for $14,500 in our operating budget this year to engage a architect to go into Swift House and look around and see initially for, as a municipal building, we have to have ADA compliance, entryway, at least one bathroom. So that's the initial look at how to that place. But we're going to have a meeting on the 2nd of February with the Board of Selectmen and the task force, with the architect to go over and actually look with the architect to go over and actually look at the conceptualization of some of the things that have been recommended through the surveys and through discussions, task force asked, or the Selectmen, we've looked at, potential uses, and then what the complexity would be to get to that area and what we can do. Whether it be conference areas, you know, part of the Chamber of Commerce area, they do store things over there right now. But, you know, it has to be looked at in context. And what do you do with the second floor? I mean, that's first floor, kind of second floor. So we're going to be looking at a, probably like the sidewalk program, it's going to be a series of movements forward. Obviously, the costs, anybody's kind of built or renovated and all the facility, it can get quite costly. But we think if we really approach it smartly, we'll have a plan for the town to look at. And the town will make the final decision on obviously what they want to fund in that building and construction and so on. So they'll look at the potential uses and weigh against other facilities in town, assume, and go from there. So that's, so in regard to that, then we moved money back over the line, again, back to the non-tax years to 2030, excuse me, about $175,000 for renovations parrot ADA compliance. Although we, and that's really kind of, when we get the decision in the architect's review, then we'll be able to make a better decision on what we can do this next year for that. We also can look at grants. We look at Steve grants, if you're familiar, it's Small Town Economic Program. And it's geared for small towns like us. We built the Welcome Center with a Steve grant. It's one of the last ones we did, I think, right before COVID. But we are going to be aggressively going after that. That process, again, doesn't start really beginning of June, beginning of July with the state. But we're gearing up right now, planning on how we can approach it for grants of that nature, you know, to help the town. But specifically, we're going to look at what we can potentially get to offset anything that we're going to look at with the Squid House. And that's one of the reasons we agreed to move it over back into the 2030 and not out of the taxable year for that $175,000. So that was, the other one, to finish up on facilities and buildings, was a window replacement for town hall. They're not bad, but they need to be, you know, more compliant with current weather resistance and so on. Most of them are upstairs right now. Town Hall's been around for a while, so it needs to be replaced. So, and that was in the capital plan to do that. We just moved it out one year to try to effect, again, a reduction in the overall capital plan. So, as Lynn said, we did restore some money in our second meeting. First meeting, we took money out for paving and drainage in Emory Park. We heard from Park and Rec and decided to replace that 25 into the taxable year of 2029. So if you want to look at the number up on the gray area in the second page, that is the amount, 29, 87, 836. 987,1836 is what that total of all what we recommended to the Board of Finance, that's the amount. The original, we took $720,000 out with a little over 16%, right around 16%, so it wasn't exactly the 15, but we really thought we tried to keep it to that guideline, again, using it as a guideline and work from there. So, and if possible, Board of Finance will look at it and say, take it over again, redo it. So we're prepared to look at that if we have to. But we're always going to be trying to find alternate funding, you know, as our dear, my dear friend Bruce Adams should say, free money from somebody, even if it's state money, we know we don't pay taxes. But there are grants nationally and statewide that we could take advantage of and should. And I think we'll be working on that overall. So that is a recommendation to the town, or the explanation of what the Board of Selectmen has recommended to the Board of Files, and my presentation to the towns. So I'll take any more questions from anyone? There's no vote on this? It's just a press, yes, Matt?
Matt Starr. Marty, as you know, Bloxford Road, it took me 11 years to get it almost funded this year. Hopefully, nothing goes wrong. And one of the reasons was we can't go over a million dollars per year in cash expenditure. But then looking at this, we're going 1.1, 1.2, 1.2, 2.1, 2.9, 3. As a totals. So what changed? There's $200,000 for Studio Hill. It's like two years old. But Boston had to wait extra years. And it was actually pushed back one year because we were over a million dollars in the capital plan. Other than that. So, you know, it looks like you're in really bad shape in the upcoming year. Have you guys thought about going back and looking at all this money that's already been taxed in the piggy bank? And not used for stuff like town garage siding, paving the town garage? I mean, you're going to move all the mountains of material there to pave it and put it back? You know, garage doors? I'm not opposed to doing it if it needs it, but if it doesn't need it, it's been there for so long. Why not take that money and use it in Emory Park? Use it in Bloxford Road, use it somewhere where it needs to be used. You taxed us, and all this money's there. The other thing I asked for, Rick, numerous years in a row, you know, what year are these trucks? What bridges are they? They're not all labeled. How should the taxpayers approve for stuff that it's this game of getting as much money from the town and the taxpayers and then not even using? It's terrible. Some of this stuff, six, eight years, the money's been sitting around not used. It should be, it should be two years at the most and dump right back in. It's really overtaxing the taxpayers account and adding to that big bribe that you already have of undesignating.
I can't argue with any of the facts that you've laid out, Matt. I think that's what we've tried to explain, what we want to do with the Board of Selectmen that's here now, is to take a look at that and forming policies where we don't leave a lot of money that's already been taxed out of our pocket, mine too, as well as yours, and now it's sitting there unused for projects that maybe aren't as serious or as necessary as before, or for whatever reason, we have to find out. And I totally agree with you about naming the bridges in a row, it drives me crazy. And that was my error not making Rich actually finish that up. He started doing it, but he's never finished it. I don't want to blame Rick, I didn't really follow up on it. But one of the things we are going to do this year, when it gets to actual construction in this year on the town, we will have a calendar that will come out. Lynn and I have both been pushing that for a long time. It'll be a calendar that you can see, not the day after it starts, but actually weeks before, as we build up to actually getting the contractor or the town crew ready to go and take out a bridge or road, you'll know when that will be going down. So you can plan if you have to drive around it or you have to use it. Fire department will be more attuned, although they're pretty, they're pretty well attuned, I think, to what we do do on roads. I'm always hitting Allen when they're breaking it out, even on private roads that, you know, town roads. So we will be doing that, and we'll be trying to work that. But so there are specifics, Matt, that I totally agree with you, and we need to do better. And we will. I think we're planning on doing that, because it's our desire to really put that into place. But I appreciate your bringing those comments up. Yes, ma'am?
Wendy Murphy, has anybody figured out what to do about some of these buildings that seem to belong to the town but don't? There are all kinds of grants that we could go for. I see that the fire department comes in under capital in purpose, but it's not owned by the town technically. The library, I mean, we have about five buildings like that.
Right.
So it's got to be sorted out because it's affecting our budgets.
That's a good point. Most people don't know that by law, we must fund a fire district. By law, by state laws, we're a town, we cooperate with a town in Connecticut. We must fund and have a fire district. I think it has to be KVFD if there's some reason it changes in the future, we go to regional fire. I mean, there's all kinds of things you could think about as the world changes, but we must fund it. We do not have to fund a private library. Not that we don't want to. I mean, I'm all in favor of designating our Kent Memorial Library, beautiful place, one that has served our town, my kids and everyone else, myself, for years. And we do make a part of our planning process, budget process, to make a payment to the fire department or to the.
Just that we are not eligible for some of the funding that the state and the feds offer because of the ambiguity of these titles.
I don't know if that's true. I believe the state, I actually did prevent funding, but I believe the state did. Did the library receive a grant this year from the state?
Yeah, no, but I mean, just, you know, for the environmental or the clean energy projects.
Well, you know what I stand on that one, but yes, we do. We are going to work more aggressively, as best we can, to actually look at that. And we have some ideas, and they haven't come to fruition yet. Hopefully, in the, we can see some ideas of what we're trying to do to actually put some assets against that. So we'll do that.
But we have to find the actual role of the town and the ownership of these buildings in order to collect.
True, I mean, yeah.
Lawyer has to be brought in, yes.
Yeah, it's true, that's true. We have to, lawyers always have to be brought in. And we love lawyers. I have a daughter who's a lawyer. She's from Colorado. I'm trying, she's got my grandson out there. My wife is out there now. But, yeah, Wendy, your point is well taken. I think we need to look at what we can do to support all of our organizations in town. I mean, we don't want to get in the soapbox, I don't mean to take a firing time with, like, thing, but that's something that we, I think, I know the Board of Selectmen totally, all of us believe in. And most everybody that's served on every committee wants to take care of the town in every aspect, whether it's public, private, neighbors, back and forth. I think this is one of the wonderful things. That's why I moved here full-time many years, or part-time, married into it, but decided this was going to be our rest place because I believe in the people. Anyway. Any more questions on the capital plan specifically or anything else? I mean, if we have, you know, what else is a problem here in the town meeting?
We'd like to see one hearing today.
One hearing, please.
Is this a hearing for the capital plan? Or there'll be another hearing where?
There will be another hearing, correct. This is the, this is just our explanation to the public of what we're turning over to the Board of Selectmen, and our reasoning for what we've done at our level. And then Jason and his, Wendy or Nancy will. Okay, see, no more questions?
Yeah, I think it's a part of, this is just a patient of the plan, and that there'll be other opportunities for public input, specifically through Board of Finance in the coming months. You can keep in the loop on that. But I'd like to thank Marty for explaining the changes that were made. And thank everyone for coming tonight. I don't know if we need a motion to adjourn now. But at this point, I think I'll call it a night.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.